This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening. Today is Wednesday, October 26, 2022. We are both ready to start a work session this evening. It is going to be for the planned action area for the Center Downtown Core area, as well as the Timmin Road, what we call Timmin Landing. So we have two presenters tonight. First of all, our Public Works Director, Brian Cast, will be presenting, and then our Contract City Planner, Ethan Spool, will be presenting. So we do have a council member joining us virtually. Okay, I will. But we have one council member joining us virtually, two joining us virtually. So we do have a quorum, and I'll go ahead and take the roll call. Make sure I go in order here. Councilmember Fox. Absent and excused. Councilmember Kasperg. Absent and excused. Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Apparently, I was muted. Yes, I am present. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. And Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Okay. So with that, we can go ahead and get started. Again, this is a work session, so there's really no opportunity for public comment during a work session. We'll just be able to listen to the presentations and we'll see where we end up when it gets to be 6:30. Okay. Mr. Cast, if you would please kick it off. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and citizens. So I'm going to be talking to you a little bit this evening about the plans for the Planned Action Area, starting with a brief overview of what a Planned Action Area is, the areas that we're looking at targeting for this, and then the process that we will go through, and the consultant selection process that we went through to select WSP and Ethan on the project team next to me here. So with that, next slide, please. A Planned Action Area is essentially a development plan for a specific area of a city, similar to a subarea plan, but then it goes one step further and looks at the environmental impacts from the proposed development of that area. So the first process, like a subarea plan, we will do a subarea plan to set the community vision for the area. And then we will take that and complete a State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA, review during that planning phase. Typically, those take place at the time of development, when we have a development proposal come forward, and it's on the developer to create that checklist and submit it to staff for review and approval. And staff then reviews the proposed impacts and the proposed mitigation for the impacts of that project. This Planned Action Area process frontloads that and puts that burden on the city to draft that statement, which has the benefit of shorting timeframes and reducing the burden and the risk on developers who come in and develop consistent with the plan that the city prepares. So next slide, please. So this is a map of the city showing the two areas, and it's a little bit hard to see there, but we have two areas that are adjacent that we are looking at completing Planned Action Areas on through this process. The first is the downtown area, so that's basically just the area north of the East Fork and encompasses the downtown area here. Timmin Landing is south of the river. And these two areas, we felt that it was a good idea to do these two plans together because there is a lot of continuity and connection between these two areas. They share that connection with the river. There's going to be a lot of overlap between the recreation component of it between these two areas. So the plan is to do two plans with one project team and one group that are, that work well and mesh well together. Next slide. So the Timmin Landing area is the city's mixed-use area. That's a mix of commercial and residential uses. And the plan is to continue that zoning. There's some other zones in there, residential zones as well, but the heart of the area is the mixed-use area. So the first step that we're going to do is take a look at the existing mixed-use code. We've had some feedback from past applicants that there may be some challenges implementing that code, so we'll take a look and see what those challenges are, see if we need to make any tweaks to that code. We will also be completing a market analysis for the multifamily and commercial demand in the area, looking at infrastructure. That includes La Center roadway, Timmin Road, and associated utilities, and how basically we get people and infrastructure in and out of this area. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the connection to the river and recreation opportunities. We have Pollock Park in this subarea or in this, that will be integrating into the plan and looking at how we further strengthen that recreation connection to the river. Similarly, the downtown area, the plan, the comp plan envisions this to be a small and active commercial node. We're looking to see how we can expand the city's opportunities for dining, shopping, entertainment, and recreation in this area. Obviously, the card rooms are going to be a key stakeholder in this process as we come up with the vision for the downtown area. The city also owns several properties in this subareas that we will be looking at how we integrate those into the plan and also the potential to redevelop these areas and potentially integrate public-private partnerships into the mix so that we can work with the development community to leverage those publicly owned assets. For the process of selecting a consultant for this, the city submitted a request for proposals. I think it was back in September. It was out for roughly a month, and the city received two proposals for the project. The selection committee included myself, Tony, the city engineer, the mayor, and Jeff Swanson. And we reviewed and scored these two proposals based on the criteria that was developed in the request for proposals. Ultimately, through that process, WSP was selected. And as mentioned, Ethan here is next to me and can answer any questions that specifically come up regarding their proposal and particularly the schedule that we're going to be talking about here in a minute.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, next slide, please. So in general, the process that we will go through for both of these plans is to first set the vision. And again, this is very similar to a subarea plan, similar process with engaging the community. So the first thing that we're going to be doing is taking a look at the existing conditions, the existing zoning, the existing land use and code requirements for the area. We'll then be completing a market analysis to look at the potential for those areas to develop out under the current code and as well as we'll do a follow-up market analysis after we have implemented. We'll look at transportation and infrastructure and then also be taking a look at the natural resources and potential for archaeological impacts through the redevelopment of these areas. Following that process, there will be an extensive community outreach process that will include developing a technical advisory committee that will be comprised of public planners that work in the area to provide some input and review of the proposed plan that we're developing. We also will be doing community workshops and community survey and really talking to key stakeholders and property owners in both of these areas to get a sense of what they would like to see these areas develop into or redevelop into. And then we will also be completing a developer-focused group to get the development community's input as well on where we're going with these plans. Next slide. So following that, we will then look at how we implement the vision that is created through that process. That would be a combination of adopting those subarea plans that we develop and then completing, like I mentioned a second ago, post-plan market analysis, adjusting our capital facilities plans to include the necessary transportation and other public infrastructure that we identify as a need to serve these areas, and then potentially code updates as necessary to support the vision that's created. And then the final piece of this, and what really makes the Planned Action Area different from your standard subarea process is the SEPA process and the Planned Action Area ordinance. So the sort of the final piece of this implementation will be developing that environmental impact statement for each of these two subarea plans, completing that SEPA review and identifying any necessary mitigation that these development proposals will trigger, and then drafting and having council adopt a Planned Action Area ordinance for each of these two areas. Ethan, do you want to add anything on to that?
So before we move on to Ethan, council members, do you have any questions for Brian in the slide presentation he just presented?
I have a couple, Brian. Are we, in addition to involving the develop, some of the developers and getting their input, are we also reaching out to the Kowalski tribe?
We can definitely do that. We haven't really envisioned that in the current process. Certainly, there, as we look at the junction area, we'll be working very closely with them. And that's something that we're counting on tackling sort of subsequent to this, these two area, planned area updates. But we can definitely engage them. And if there's an interest and a willingness to participate there, we'd be happy to get their feedback and have them as a stakeholder in this process.
I think it might behoove us to do that simply because the, all of the discussions that we've had with them up to this point, we've had shared discussions about overall vision of tying in trails and pathways from I-5 down to the center. And so I think the inclusion in the discussion would help come to an agreement of overall design and even some of the historical aspect in the, you know, pathway, the markers that we, in the future, place, and things of that nature as well.
Yeah, we, excuse me. We can certainly look at doing that and including the Kowalski tribe in the outreach. And I agree with you. I think it would be a good idea to do that. And the obvious-
Excuse me, Ethan, just a second. Could you please turn the volume up? We have one person here that's wanting to hear the, hear the meeting.
Is he good? Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, we can certainly look at including the Kowalski tribe in the outreach effort. And I agree with you. I think it would be a good idea to do that. They obviously have a longer history here than any of us. And so that was one of the reasons why we decided to bring an archaeologist onto our team because we know that there's the potential for archaeological resources in some of these areas. And forming the subarea plan could, you know, take into account not only where some of those resources are, but building a somewhat of an identity around some of that history that the Kowalski tribe has. And that would obviously work well in the future in terms of relationships with the Kowalski tribe. Then Brian asked me to comment just really quickly on the SEPA Planned Action. And so you might be familiar with the term environmental impact statement. Those are part of the SEPA process as well, and those are conducted for larger planning efforts around the state of Washington, not only including subarea plans, but comprehensive plan updates commonly have them as well. And so what that does, as Brian alluded to, is it sort of sets some plan threshold maximums, development maximums, number of units, amount of traffic, impacts to wetlands and natural resources. And then that part of the permitting process is then done. So when developers come in, they don't have to look at those type of impacts as closely. So that, that's what that is about.
I think that's a significant part of the overall plan in terms of shortening. Well, first of all, you know, giving the developers a clear idea of any types of obstacles that may exist, but also, and ourselves as well. But also the timeframe, that it shortens in the whole process for any developer that has interest is a big plus.
Very good. Thank you. Great suggestion. Appreciate it.
So the final thing, and then I'll open it up for additional questions here, is just the overall project schedule that WSP has put together. And, you know, as mentioned, this is going to be a fairly long, multi-year process. You know, the plan is to kick off first thing next year with, you know, that community outreach and existing conditions analysis. And it's really planned that the subarea planning, so setting that vision, basically will take the majority of 2023. And then in 2024, we will roll into the adoption of those plans, the Planned Action Area ordinance, and the environmental work that Ethan was just talking about. So this is something that we'll be focusing on, that we'll be touching base on with the council and with the planning commission multiple times throughout the coming two years. But it's going to be a real big boon for those two areas to set them up for future development.
So real quick, Brian, can you send us out a copy of that preliminary schedule? And what is the timeframe? You know, I've heard two years, but that's just to get started, right? I mean, once we get started, what's the timeframe of that?
So I'm, we're really envisioning the city's portion of this lasting that two years. So at the end of 2024, we expect to have the vision set, all the pieces in place, the environmental statement completed, mitigation identified. And then at that point, this table is really set for developers to start coming in and building out that vision. That, you know, it's kind of hard to put a timeframe on. You know, obviously, our goal is to engage the development community as a stakeholder in this, to get feedback from them. And hopefully, that builds interest as well so that we can roll straight into having some projects come through. But, you know, it's largely kind of depends on market conditions and the developers as well. Ethan, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to reiterate some of what Brian's saying here, which is that the planning process would be complete, you know, targeted for about two years. And thereafter, developers would hopefully start looking at the property. One of the things that will help the city do that and one of the outcomes, common outcomes of subarea plans is a list of actions that the city can take to promote development. And those can be anything from financing and grants to putting some public infrastructure in place. And so that's where kind of the partnership comes in because the city may then be prioritizing some of these projects for future expenditures on its capital facilities plans. And that helps lower the cost of development for developers to come in and develop and helps make it more attractive for, for them to do so. So Councilmember Strobin, I think maybe part of your question is also, you know, after the two years, how long will this take? I agree with Public Works Director Cast that, you know, that's a little bit hard to determine. But one of the things that we'll likely be doing as part of this project is preparing like a one, a one-year, a five-year, and a 10-year action plan so that the city can sort of stay on track with this. But, you know, typically, these can take five to 10 years for the areas to build out, especially if they're not already, already developed, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, if I can get a copy, or I'm sure other council members would like it. But if we can get a copy of the, of that preliminary schedule, that'd be great, and also the slideshow.
Sure, yeah, we'll send out the slideshow, and we can send out WSP's-
It's in the agenda packet.
All right, perfect. I'm not used to seeing the work sessions in the agenda packet.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, Ethan, let's go ahead and proceed.
I don't actually have a presentation tonight, but I just wanted to thank the city for selecting WSP for this effort. As you know, we've been working with the city for three years now, and during that time, we've gathered a significant amount of knowledge about, about the city. And we're hoping to be able to use that and leverage it for this subarea planning process. WSP has been involved in a number of different subarea plans in southwest Washington, in Clark County, including three in Ridgefield that Brian was involved in when he was there, a couple in Waschugul, and one in Vancouver, including a Planned Action Ordinance. So we're looking forward to bringing that knowledge to bear in this process, but then also working with you together, more information and knowledge that you have about La Center, and putting that together in a way that's unique to La Center and forms a plan that the city can get behind, that the citizens can get behind, and moves forward. So again, appreciate you for selecting us and just want to thank you for that. We're really excited to be working on this project and to be continuing to work in La Center. If you have any questions about the subarea planning process, please let me know. I'm actually not going to be the project manager for this project. The project manager is somebody by the name of Scott Kyler, who's on the line right now, listening. Scott, if you would just really quickly say hi.
Graham, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Scott Kyler will be the project manager, and I have been on several of the projects that have been mentioned in our proposal tonight. And I'm very excited to be working with you all and the community to really formulate the vision, pull together the team and resources to deliver on this schedule and really set the table for, for the next wave of development for La Center. Thank you.
And then I also asked someone else to attend, Brian Carrico. I don't know if Brian made it. Oh, wait, he's on, okay. Brian, do you mind saying hi? Brian is going to be the task lead for the SEPA Planned Action. And so I figured I would bring him along, at least virtually, so he could answer any questions about that process that you might have. But Brian, can you say hi to the council?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I head up the Vancouver office for planning and environmental for WSP and excited to be part of this team and deliver for the city.
Great. And as I said, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. You can funnel those questions through Brian or directly to myself, and we'll get those answered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ethan. And yeah, thank you to the members of your staff that are going to be involved with this process. It's, it is an exciting process. It's, it's common practice from the standpoint that, as you just mentioned, Waschugul, city of Vancouver, I know the city of Camas, the city of Ridgefield have all gone through similar processes. So it's, it's very engaging with the community. It's engaging with stakeholders, property owners, existing business owners, and, and the development community as well. So the end result should be a really solid plan that will give us a great roadmap going forward for development of the Timmin Road area and then redevelopment of the Downtown Core area. So it's, I'm thrilled that we're getting started. It's going to be a great process. And I hope there's lots of engagement because this is what, that's a big part of this whole process, is community engagement. This is the time for people to step up and share their views with the city council and with city staff as to what they would like to see happen in the city of La Center for future growth. So with that, are there any other questions from council members for either Ethan or Brian?
This is Councilmember Boyle. I just want to say thank you for that presentation, Brian and Ethan. And yeah, I think this is a great step moving forward with getting started with some future development in the city. I think a lot of people have been looking forward to that. Like you guys have said, and to reiterate, you know, I think it'll be pretty engaging for the community to get involved and be a part of this process. Yeah, exciting times. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, council, if you don't have any other questions or if you choose to discuss this amongst yourselves, now would be a good time. If not, it's right now about five minutes to six. Not hearing anything, we can go ahead and adjourn the work session. And we'll-
You know, I do have one question before we adjourn. Um, are there gonna, there are going to be some groups put together to help with this process, like from the community and from the city as well? Is, or I may not be wording myself correctly, but it's on the tip of my tongue, and I apologize. Yeah, I guess, is this gonna, like, as far as being a joint effort, we're going to have community involvement as well as city involvement along with our contractors to make this a big cohesive collaborative project? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. So there'll, there'll be multiple points for engagement, and I'll let Ethan sort of expand on that. But we envision not only community input, but also landowner and stakeholder input, development input. And they'll probably all be, there'll be some overlap between all of those, but they will be separate as well. Ethan, I'll let you expand on that.
Yeah, I mean, Brian pretty much summed it up well. Councilmember Boyle, there's going to be a couple of community workshops, community-wide workshops during the process where anybody can come and contribute to those. And then we're also planning on forming a joint technical and community advisory committee. And so what that would be is possibly some key property owners, maybe a council member, maybe a planning commission member, some other key stakeholders throughout the community that would form that committee, as well as some technical experts, possibly from some other communities that have gone through this process and can provide input to you and the committee on, on things they want to see happen in the subarea plan. And the, the public involvement would happen throughout, which isn't to say it would be continuous, but there would be opportunities from start to finish for the public to connect with the process. A website would be one of those key things, possibly using the city's website and social media as well. We know that the community is engaged in social media, and WSP's public involvement team has quite a bit of experience with, with helping manage outreach on public, excuse me, on social media platforms. So it's going to be kind of a multi-pronged thing where there's going to be many different ways that, that people can, can connect to this. And yes, we will coordinate and collaborate to bring all of those different, not only all those different people together, but the technical elements together, our knowledge, the citizens' knowledge. So everybody at the end of the day is, is on the, on the same page.
Yeah, very cool. And I think that's kind of what I was trying to articulate is what you said about the joint technical and community advisory committee. You know, just people that are dedicated to, you know, get, with, you know, having a vision and following it through. I mean, obviously, with everybody else's input and whatnot, but kind of a dedicated group to, you know, seeing, seeing things out other than obviously what your involvement is and whatnot. But yeah, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and then, sorry, one other thing really quickly. We'll be providing updates to the planning commission, to the full planning commission and the full city council periodically throughout the process as well. So it won't be like, hey, here's kickoff, and then we come back two years later, and can you please adopt this? You'll be kept up to date throughout the process.
Yeah, I think that's key as well. I appreciate that, too.
Very good. Thank you for the questions. Any other thoughts before we adjourn? Okay, with that, I'd like to thank both Brian and Ethan again for bringing this forward. And I'm truly looking forward to starting the process. It's pretty exciting stuff. So it's right now just a little bit before six. We'll adjourn, and we'll reconvene for a city council meeting right at 6:30. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we all good?
Yep.
All right, you ready, Melissa? Good evening and welcome to this evening's La Center City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America.
Clerk, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Boyle?
Virtually present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Councilman, he is absent and excused.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you.
Next on the agenda are citizen public comment. If there are any ones from the audience this evening that would like to make a comment, if they presented a card, if you please call them up at this time.
Dennis Hill?
Hello? Is this on?
Yep.
And I'm sorry, just, would you please give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes?
Right, thank you. Dennis Hill at 1316 West Alder Place, La Center. Mayor, city council, and La Center citizens. As the Chair of the La Center Salary Commission, I have a few more remarks regarding this year's review of the mayor and city council salaries. First, the salary commissioners want to thank the mayor and the city councillors for their willingness to serve La Center and its citizens. We appreciate your time and commitment, and no, it does not come with some sacrifice in order to serve. The salary increases, as outlined in this year's La Center Ordinance 2022-12, are based on involvement slash participation in city council meetings held twice a month. The per-meeting increase, we feel, reflects the importance of our mayor and city councillors' attendance at all council meetings, including workshops and council retreats. Seeing our city officials in attendance in person or visually, or virtually, gives reassurance to our citizens that their elected officials are performing the tasks expected for which they were elected. The commission looked at several factors in coming up with these increases, including the review of existing salary compensation used by other cities of a similar size in our area. These increases equate to approximately 15% for both the mayor and the city council members. Based on a continued budget deficit, the salary commissioners believe that the increases are reasonable based on projected city revenue. Thank you for allowing us to serve.
Thank you.
Kimberly Elbin?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Elbin. I'm from La Center. I prefer not to give my address. I don't feel safe.
That's okay.
So I was born in Vancouver, Washington, USA, and have lived here in La Center for over 30 years, where my mother was born. I'm going to give this council and the citizens a personal update. Two days ago, on Monday, October 24th, I spoke at the Vancouver City Council meeting, excuse me, out of breath, spoke there twice. After the second speech, I walked over to the clerk to file information to public records. And because I speak up against them, because they're a United Nations membership with the ICLEI, which follows a two-fold agenda to have a one-world order and to depopulate, and also mentioned to the citizens that she, the mayor, required COVID jab passports to enter a public open building. The public was welcomed at this retreat. She later, she later on our video, excuse me, I don't have my reading glasses. She later, on our video evidence, physically locked four of us citizens out of the open public retreat. So as walking from the podium, I walked to the clerk, and the mayor piped up and said, "We have never required passports." I spoke up and said, "You are lying. You did require passports to enter the building and at the Vancouver City Retreat back in February of this year." She then calmly, as if I was baited to speak, and she called her Gestapo police to escort Ms. Elbin out of the chambers as she is a, as I was a disturbance to this meeting. I'll make note now that I was the last and only speaker at the community forum speaking, and she immediately called adjournment, as was the agenda layout. The officer came up behind me, grabbed my arm to remove me, and jerked away. I jerked away and out of his grip. And he said, and I said, "Don't touch me. Don't ever touch me." And he proceeded to grab my left arm with both hands with extensive force and forced me along as I was telling him he is hurting me. I also said to the public sitting there that this is the only, only the beginning of how a Marxist socialist community, excuse me, communistic local government rules over a free citizen.
Excuse me, Kimberly?
Yes.
Your three minutes have expired. If you could please wrap it up, please.
I will, thank you. I'm reading a little bit slow today. I'm rather disturbed. This is a warning as to what is coming to those that swore an oath to keep America safe and free from foreign and domestic enemies, and I am on record stating that they are a domestic enemy. I made a 40-minute police report and documented my injuries at the hospital, where a sheriff also took pictures of the bruins and the hand marks on my arm. Today, I attended the 8:30 Clark County Board of Health meeting, of which I spoke there my three minutes with no problem. I mentioned Medicine Man Melnick. I will not call him a doctor. Medicine Man Melnick is lying to the citizens of Clark County and has, he read the true, and has he read the true information on the COVID bioweapon jab put in the public record on September 14th, of which I asked people to read at the Board of Health this year. You all should read that information. However, by design, how would you know what to look for?
Kimberly, your time has expired. If you could please wrap it up here in the next few seconds.
Yeah, I only have a little half-page here, okay? And thank you for the time. So how would a person know what to ask for out of public records requests if they didn't attend the meeting and not know what's going on? So I've been asking the Vancouver City Council. I've asked the Board of Health and Clark County Council that they put the public records immediately on for tax dollars, demand this. So there's transparency, so that when this person goes to see the council meeting later, they can just tap on what's public record. After I was done with my three minutes, I sat down, and their Gestapo security came to me and asked me to follow him. I refused, saying I want proper paperwork. He finally left, and in about a minute, here come two fully loaded sheriffs. I agreed to talk with him outside chambers, but said I will be able to speak a second time at the public comment there at the Board of Health. A Clark County person gave an official no trespass paper dated September 14th to me. I asked the reasons. No reason. I will find out tomorrow, I'm told. I insisted and, and and proper, for the proper paperwork for being trespassed. So absolutely no disruption unless you consider standing for God, family, and country a crime. In this one-world order, people like me are Biden's enemies, as he says that the MAGA people are terrorists, along with parents that stand up at school board meetings. You citizens must wake up to this nightmare and assemble now. My ordeals are great examples of a Marxist communist socialistic state. I end here with scripture, but I also ask that people listen to the radio Monday through Friday from noon to four, and 101.1 FM and AM 860, Romans 8:28. And we know that in all things, God works for the good of those who love Him, who have been called according to His purpose. Amen.
Okay.
There are no more cards presented.
Okay. So next, if there are any callers calling in this evening that would like to address the city council, now is the opportunity for you to do that. Please remember to push star six on your cell phone. We have no callers? Okay, we have no callers this evening. Anyone on the virtual meeting? Okay. So, and then finally, any written comments that were sent in?
There were none.
Okay, very good. So that ends public comment. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion. If I could please get a motion. Got ahead of myself. We have a motion in a second, please? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things for the council this evening. First of all, a reminder that our next city council meeting will be next Wednesday, November 2nd. We had to change the schedule because of the holidays coming up. So the next meeting for the La Center City Council will be November 2nd, Wednesday, November 2nd. And just a reminder that there will be no mayor's town hall in the month of November. Also, just as an update with our conversations with the city of Richfield regarding a police contract, I did meet with the city manager of Richfield today, Steve Stewart. He did get three proposals or three candidates to interview for the consultant that he wants to take a look at the process and look at the, I'd like to say, the existing assessments that both Richfield just recently completed for their police department, as well as the assessment that we have done for our La Center Police Department. And he has chosen one of those three consultants, and he will engage that consultant, and they will start the process for that. And hopefully, we'll get some results from that in the near future. So again, the process is moving forward, albeit I'll admit it's a slow process, but it's, I think right now is the time to get the involvement from both Richfield and La Center. And so I'm just happy to report that it is moving forward, and Steve Stewart is engaged with it. So any questions for me, council, before I go on to the mayor's report?
I have a question. I was just wondering, so are we going into this with any sort of direction? Like, do they, do we have like something that we're offering them or something that they're offering us? Or are we just looking at what sort of supplies and, you know, vehicles and property that we have to offer them? Or how are we going about this? I guess it just feels like it's a little bit the blind leading the law. Blind, in my opinion, is how it feels, because I don't know what exactly we're, I know they're going to be looking at, you know, what's going on within each department. But yeah, I don't know if you could explain that a little bit better to me?
Sure. So yeah, this, you know, as we get further into the process, you know, the city will be very engaged with the city of Richfield. And I think I'll let the chief address some of that. I know we've provided a great deal of information already to the city of Richfield, as we did to the Clark County Sheriff's Office regarding, you know, current assets that the city of La Center has in terms of vehicles and equipment and what have you. So, Chief, if you don't mind addressing that, we will get to that point. But I, you know, that's the encouraging part here. So much of that work has already been completed, and it's already in the hands of Richfield. So I think that, again, the city manager there wants to have this third party take a look at it. I completely understand that. And then once we get through that process, then I think we can move forward with, you know, the actual sitting down and talking about the terms and conditions. So Chief, if you don't mind, could you please just kind of share your thoughts with us on that as well?
Certainly, Mayor and Councilmember Boyle. I know that the city of Richfield has done a scope of work in order to select a vendor to do their analysis. What they want to look at specifically is obviously how many, what staffing is it going to take for them to add additional police officers, supervisors, records, clerks, those kinds of things to provide services to the city of La Center? In addition to that, what kind of equipment will need to be purchased? And then when you take into consideration all of the personnel and the equipment, then there's the issue of proportionality. What percentage of whatever those items are does the city of La Center pay versus, let's say, perhaps the city of Richfield? An example would be, we may, for a police officer that's patrolling in the city of La Center, we may decide, based on the study that they're going to do, that we're going to pay 100% of the salary and benefits of an officer. But when it comes to their police chief, we may decide that, based on our percentage of work in our city, we may decide to pay 10 or 20% of that police chief's salary and benefits. And then there's going to be like things in the contract, such as who has the liability? How do we, both entities resolve any conflicts through mediation? So there's a lot of things that are coming down the pipe. It's a little early in the process yet, but I'm sure that this consultant will reach out to both cities. At the end of the day, it's Richfield that's kind of driving the train because they're the ones that ultimately have to decide whether it's worth it to them to provide services to another city. So I think that's where we are right now. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief. So is Bronson join us virtually? Okay, so next on the agenda is the attorney's report, and city attorney Bronson Potter. Do you have anything for the council this evening?
I do. Greetings from Cohasset, Massachusetts, our visiting family. We had a hearing in the Clark County Superior Court last Friday, October twenty-first, on Riverside Estates. The hearing was on a motion for the court to approve the sale of Phase Two of Riverside Estates to D.R. Horton, which is a national home builder. Shortly before the hearing, D.R. Horton lowered the price that they were offering to purchase Phase Two from six point seven million to six point three million. But despite that reduction in the price, there were no objections to the proposed sale, and the court approved it. So that sale would be free and clear of any liens against any of the real property in Phase Two. And the creditors will then submit claims to the court to satisfy the claims from the sale proceeds. For the city of La Center, the closing of the sale is gonna be dependent on two things occurring. One of those was providing security or the maintenance of public improvements in Phase Two. The, you know, typically what we get for that security is a performance bond, but in this case, the purchaser will be depositing ninety-seven thousand dollars of cash in a city account that can be drawn upon if the public improvements require maintenance within the next two years. So that agreement actually was on your consent agenda tonight. So it's been approved by the city. D.R. Horton's reviewed it and approved it. And the closing of the sale will be dependent on those funds being deposited with the city. The other item that has to occur is the approval of the final plat of Phase Two. And again, from the city's perspective, our last item on our checklist really is the review and approval of the CCNRs, which stands for the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that the homeowners association adopts. We are interested in being sure that those CCNRs have provisions requiring the homeowners, homeowners association to maintain track day, which is a common area as you enter the development. So there's landscaping that has to be maintained there. And then there's the stormwater drainage system. So the covenants, again, require the homeowners association and property owners to maintain the different elements of the stormwater system. So we've done our review of those CCNRs. We made some edits and comments, sent those back to the receiver in Horton a few days ago, and are just waiting for their review of our edits and comments. But I think we'll see that transaction closing within the next week or at the outside two weeks. I'm gonna be traveling for a couple more weeks, so I will not be with you at the November two meeting, but the assistant city attorney, Jenny Parker, will be there. So with that, those are my remarks, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney this evening, council? Okay, thank you, Bronson. Thank you for all your continued hard work with the Riverside development. It's been quite a, quite a journey for us, but it sounds like we're getting close to the end. And again, I appreciate all your efforts. It's been quite a heavy lift. So next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening.
Council reports?
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, council comments, thank you. Yeah, next council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Fox.
Hello, good evening. Thank you all for coming. I love to see community involvement. Don't have much to say. Obviously, we're kind of missing some folks tonight, but yeah, just let's have a very safe Halloween that's coming up. It's gonna be raining all day, so let's just very be watchful of, of all of our sidewalks and our crosswalks, and just be really mindful, and let's just come together to have a nice safe Halloween here in La Center. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Boyle?
Um, hello, everyone. Sorry, I'm not there tonight. I'm, just had knee surgery on Monday, so I'm still recovering from that. But the only thing I really had is, I just had a, got a little note from somebody that the La Center Elementary PTO is up and running again, and they're hosting a creature crawl on Friday, October twenty-eighth, from five to seven, at the elementary school. And other than that, I don't really have anything else.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you repeat the time and date, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat the time and date, please?
October twenty-eighth, from five to seven. So this Friday, from five to seven, at the elementary school.
And Councilmember Serviny?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, knocked everything over. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming. It's always great to see you in the audience and your involvement and your questions and comments. I would like to recognize the work that La Center United does for the community on all of the people that are involved. It really invested many years of hard work, and I certainly appreciate everything that they've done and the events that they've been holding, you know, and the involvement of the community as you see it grow, and the audience is just heartwarming. And I think it shows all the positive things that they've accomplished. So if you see any of the individuals that are involved, tell them how much you appreciate their hard work and everything that's going on in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to staff reports. We have two this evening. The first one is the police staff report, and Chief Richardson will be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and community members. This is the council report for the month of September twenty-twenty-two. In September twenty-twenty-two, we had eighteen incidents reported to the police department that were considered crimes. I'll give you a comparison. We had twelve incidents reported in September of twenty-twenty-one. Year-to-date, January through September of twenty-twenty-two, we've had a hundred and twenty-two reported incidents. That compares with a hundred and twenty-three reported incidents in twenty-twenty-one, so we're tracking right on almost exactly the same we were last year. Of all the incidents reported, we had one assault, which was a DV-related assault, where the suspect was booked into the county jail. We had one intimidation, which was a neighbor-related dispute, where the report was referred to the prosecutor. We had nine property crimes that included three burglaries. As I mentioned, these three burglaries in September, two were homes and one was a garage. All three were unlocked. And in two of the incidents, the, they had intruders that walked into the house in late in the evening, a little after midnight, between midnight and three o'clock. Two separate, completely different incidents occurred on exactly the same night, on the same shift. And in both cases, those subjects were arrested. And it's just a reminder again to keep your, your garage and your home and your cars locked late at night. We had three thefts from vehicles. One of the thefts included a firearm that was stolen from an unlocked vehicle. So I just encourage everybody, if you have a weapon in the car, to keep the car locked or preferably take the weapon with you wherever you are, and then don't leave it unattended in your vehicle. And we had five vandalisms, and four of the vandalisms, vandalisms are related to vehicles. And we had one identity theft. We had nine arrests in September twenty-twenty-two. One simple assault, which was DV-related, one intimidation, one motor vehicle theft, where one of our officers recovered a, a rolling stolen. We had a vandalism inside of a vehicle where somebody defecated, had a disorderly conduct, and four other offenses, which are generally suspended licenses. That compares to four arrests in September twenty-twenty-one, so the officers were busy, did a good work, a lot of proactive police work was, was out there in September. Call response was decreased, both in community-initiated events and officer-initiated events. We had ninety-four community-initiated events in twenty-twenty-two, and we had a hundred and twelve in twenty-twenty-one. And we also had a decrease in the police-related events. We had forty-two in twenty-twenty-two versus fifty-two in twenty-twenty-one. We've given out about a hundred and twenty-three steering wheel locks of two hundred and four, so please come down and, and get them. We have two per household, and you come to city hall during business hours, and they will hand them to you. And trying to think, one other thing, obviously, as Councilmember Fox related, Monday, October thirty-first is trick or treat. We will, we will have two officers working that night, patrolling residential areas, make sure everybody's safe, and just remember to drive slow. It's getting dark earlier, and a lot of these costumes restrict people's vision, so they may not see you.
Yeah.
And if you have any garlic cloves or wooden stakes you want to take with you that night, those tend to work. So that's it for me.
Get some reflective, reflective outerwear is so important.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief this evening, council? Okay, we'll move on. Again, thanks, Chief. Next staff report we have is administrative services staff report, and our director of administrative services, Maria, will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I bring you the October staff report. The September sales tax disbursement was fifty-seven thousand thirty-four dollars compared to eighty-one thousand one sixty-four last year. I attended the AWC On Tap Regional Meeting in Ridgefield last week. It was a great opportunity to meet with the CEO of AWC, along with other local elected officials. Brian was also there representing the city. There was also a representative from the governor's office there. And then we hosted the Ridgefield Chambers Wind Down Wednesdays last week, so that was, that was a great event as well. Starting in November, we will have an electronic billing option for utility bills. Customers will see a code on their paper bill, which they can then go online and set up an account and receive future statements via email. And if anyone would like assistance, once they receive their paper, paper bill, they can come in, and we will help them with that. And this will be a cost savings for the city. We reached out to local artists for an opportunity to support and showcase their work. We have five artists who responded, and four will have work ready to display at the city hall by our open house on December sixth. Also, mark your calendar, we're doing a ribbon cutting and open house on December sixth from three to five P.M. We will work on this project, and every four months, we'll have artists change out their work and continue to welcome new artists. We will include the schools in hopes of attracting young artists to participate as well. Most of their work will be for sale, and any interested buyers will be directed to contact the artist for purchases. All the artists were very grateful for the opportunity and were amazed by the city's support, and this project is the beginning of several possibilities with local artists. In the fall of last year, we received a grant to organize our records room. Finance started with eighty-eight boxes, seven filing cabinets, and two bookcases full of binders. We have condensed that to fifty-two archive boxes and have three boxes left to sort. Community development and public work started with a hundred and sixty-two boxes, six filing cabinets, and five bookcases of binders. They have condensed that to sixty-six boxes and have forty-eight left to sort. In addition, we have sent twenty-three boxes to state archives and shredded over thirteen-hundred-and-fifty gallons of documents. I want to thank Desi and Jess for their hard work to get these old files cleaned up and organized. And then I also want to thank the Public Works team for preparing the storage room for us, which is downstairs in our basement here. And then lastly, you can see that we wrapped up the last month of the quarter on our gambling tax with a slight increase in cardroom revenue over last month. And that does include one-third of a month of revenue from the new Phoenix, which is now open and operating. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that, Maria. Good report, and yeah, great job by the city staff on the records. That was a huge project at, yeah, but it, it really did get rid of a lot of old paper records and consolidated everything. And so we all, now we have a relatively small amount of paper that we're storing, and it's a big improvement. So great job by city staff on that one. So we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. First this evening, we'll have a resolution twenty-twenty-two dash four sixty-six, adjusting the storm water rate. Maria will be presenting that this evening. So if you, please give us the staff report and then the resolution.
Okay. So in May of two thousand nineteen, a resolution was passed listing the stormwater monthly residential rate per account as ten dollars and sixty-one cents, and the monthly non-residential charge per ERU as ten dollars and sixty-one cents, starting January one of two thousand twenty-two. The residential and non-residential customers have been charged a stormwater rate of ten dollars and sixty cents per ERU effective January one, two thousand twenty-two. So a difference of one cent. And so the total budget impact of this correction is just over twenty dollars a month, and the cost of recovering the difference far exceeds the hundred and eighty-two dollars that we would have collected this year, which we are asking to write that off as bad debt. And so the resolution is to set the stormwater rate at ten dollars and sixty cents versus the resolution that was previously at ten sixty-one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Maria regarding the stormwater fee?
I don't have any questions.
I'll move to approve resolution four sixty-six as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution four sixty-six as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, council, and thank you again, Maria. Next, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash ten, the parking code, and Mr. Ethan Spool will present the parking code to the city council this evening. This is a public hearing, so we will have a public hearing after his presentation.
Good evening, council. Tonight I'll be talking with you about the city's parking code update, which is a project that the Planning Commission has been working on for some time since early on this year. Next slide, please. Planning Commission had seven work sessions on this topic, so it was really something that they took interest in and sunk their teeth into. And one of the reasons, I think, that is because we can all relate to parking. It's something that we do every day, whether that's going to the grocery store, or school, or a doctor's office. We sort of all inherently understand it. So I want to also thank Planning Commission for all the hard work that they put in to this project. And one of our Planning Commission members, Dennis Hill, is here in the audience. Next slide, please. So WSP's recommendations for this project that we presented to the Planning Commission were based on our experience working in La Center for the last several years, and what we were hearing from project applicants, as well as our work on other co- as well as our work on other codes for other jurisdictions. And then finally, our representation work for applicants, commercial, residential and industrial applicants in different locations around mostly Washington. The key object, some of the key objectives for this project were making the city's parking regulations more flexible and also right sizing those parking regulations. And what I mean by right sizing is requiring the the right number of spaces for each land use. You don't want to not have enough parking and you don't want to require too much parking. Either of those scenarios is 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 not great. So it's important to note that there's a balance here that's needed between flexibility and design. Higher levels of design in parking lots, such as including more landscaping is a greater hurdle and a higher development cost. But you also don't want to have too little design in parking lots because then you have sort of that just very bare stark look to parking lots. You generally want them screened. I'm going to go ahead and switch gears here just a little bit and talk to you about the some of the key changes that are proposed in the code. The first of those is talking about the parking quantity requirements. And quantity requirements, I mean the minimum number of parking spaces that are required for each use. And so the changes that we are proposing there under the existing code, excuse me, the changes that we're proposing here are, number one, listing out more land use categories so that staff and applicants have an easier time identifying what number of parking spaces are required. And the way that we did that was through some research by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is nationally accepted guidance document for doing parking studies. And those are used pretty frequently when developers want to challenge a city's parking standards. I've used that myself in some cases. And so what that manual does, the Parking Generation Manual by ITE, is they go out and they survey land uses all across the country and figure out how many spaces are actually required to serve each each use. So that's a difference, a fairly significant difference from our existing code. Because our existing code, as far as we can tell, probably just used numbers from other jurisdictions and we're not sure exactly where those came from. So we feel like this is a significant improvement over the existing code. An example of that, the existing code requires three parking spaces per multifamily residential unit. So that's two spaces per unit plus one guest space. That's a really high parking ratio for multifamily. That's more than is required typically in most jurisdictions for single family residential, which generates more trips than each multifamily unit. So we revised that parking standard down to be two multi, two spaces per multifamily unit plus one guest space per five units, not one guest space per per unit. So that that requirement will be changing as as one of the examples. We're also expanding the requirements for parking maximums. And so the existing code, generally speaking, does not put a maximum parking standard in place with one exception, which is in the mixed use code. And in that case, it sets a maximum of 125% in that zone. The exist, the new code, the proposed code will set a maximum of 150% in downtown in the mixed use zone and then 200% in all other commercial areas. So again, that's getting to that sort of right sizing that I was talking about, not having too few parking spaces, but not having too many parking spaces either.
Can you explain the percentages specifically on what that?
Yeah, sorry.
Means, I mean, what is 125% of minimum? What does that mean? So?
Well, so like in the case of 125% of the minimum, so if there was, for instance, the minimum number of parking spaces for a given use was 10 parking spaces, this would say, the existing code would say that you can only have 100, you can only have 12 and a half spaces or 13 spaces, no more than 13 spaces to serve that use. So you'd have sort of very little difference there between the minimum and the maximum in that case. Then in the proposed code, we're increasing those maximums a little bit. That gets you, that gets a developer a little bit more flexibility. So in that example where use might require 10 spaces, they could then go up to 15 spaces for 150%, or if it's 200%, then they could go up to 20 spaces. Does that make sense?
I mean, yeah, I'm just, okay, I'm just trying to wrap my whole head around it. So this is for city street specifically?
This is for off-street parking lots, serving, you know, such as the one here at City Hall or parking lots that you typically see for commercial uses, multifamily uses. So I should have said that right at the beginning. We're talking mainly about off-street parking areas here, not on-street parking spaces, although the next item that I'm going to talk about is about on-street parking.
And I'll just add here, in general, you know, the big changes Ethan mentioned is we were, our previous code was very maybe generous and maybe provided a little bit more parking than we need necessary for specific uses. But then there was, it was a very narrow window that you had to work with. So we're trying to basically give developers a little bit better flexibility. You know, they're really the experts that know how many parking spaces that their type of use needs. And we don't want to be prescribing too many parking spaces because that takes away from area that could be developed into buildings.
Sure.
And takes away from their profitability. Conversely, as Ethan said, you want to have that right size. So we're trying to just give a little bit better flexibility.
Thank you. So for on-street parking, the existing code in downtown allows for on-street parking to count to meet the off-street parking requirements. But that's within a relatively small area that's bounded between Cedar and Aspen and Fourth and Fifth. So in the proposed code, we're, we'll be expanding that area to all of downtown, you know, which is an area that goes significantly further north and a little bit south of that, and then a little bit further west and then further east, east of that. So again, that's another area of flexibility, increased flexibility. Next slide, please. The existing code does not allow for compact parking spaces. The proposed code would. So a use could have up to 20% of its spaces as compact parking. Those spaces would would have to be eight feet by 15 feet each, which is a typical dimension for compact parking spaces. That's, you know, once again, another area of flexibility for for developers to have compact parking. And then finally, landscaping, there's still a lot of similarity there with the existing code. Each parking lot is required to have both perimeter landscaping and interior landscaping. And generally, that perimeter landscaping is between five and 10 feet wide. The primary difference between the existing code and the proposed code is that the spacing of landscape islands within the interior of the parking lot will increase. So instead of having one landscape island for every seven spaces, that's been increased to one for every 12 spaces. But the size of the landscape island has, will increase from 25 square feet to 100 square feet. So overall, that's more flexible. You would end up with a little bit less landscaping overall within the parking lot. And it and it would be spaced a greater number of parking spaces in between. Next slide, please. We did receive one public comment during this process and that public comment is attached for you in the in the packet. That public comment was provided by Mr. Rodney Sweet. He was commenting on parking for motorhomes, RVs, boats and utility trailers. And one of his comments was that he wanted this issue to receive greater attention and review. So we're bringing it to your attention. Number one, and he requested in that public comment to have an additional Planning Commission meeting to discuss this, which we did. So I just want to summarize for you, because this was a public comment, I wanted to summarize for you what the proposed code will say on this topic versus what the existing code will say. So the new code will say that on-street or driveway parking is limited to two weeks per year for for those things, for the motorhomes, the RVs, boats and the utility trailers. And for residential lots, if you want to park those on your lot for more than two weeks per year, then you have to put that behind the front of the building or to the side of it. And you can see that pretty frequently in a lot of places. That's actually more flexible than the existing code, number one, because the existing code prohibits parking of those things in driveways outright. It doesn't allow them for even two weeks per year. So that's, that will get folks two weeks that they that they don't have under the existing code right now. But but it's pretty similar in a lot of ways. Other than that, it's the same two weeks for the on-street parking. And if you do park it on a residential lot, it has to be behind the front facade, just like the the new code. You just can't park it in the driveway. The new code, you can park it in the driveway, but only for two weeks. So the conclusion then of that, again, is that the new regulations will be more flexible and permissive in that aspect. And the second point on that is that we're also including boats in that in that category in these regulations, which they weren't before. You know, under the same reasoning about putting those outside the driveway beyond the two weeks per year. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have. We are recommending, as always, that you conduct a public hearing and open this up for public comment and then adopt ordinance 2022-10, amending the city's parking standards. There's a proposed motion there for you. And there's a full list of the code sections listed at the top of the ordinance. We can find that for you. So one question I would have right off the bat, just for Bronson, would be in the council's motion, do they need to list off all of the amendatory code sections? Or is it sufficient to have a motion just adopting the ordinance?
It'd be sufficient to have a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Council, any, before I open up the public hearing, any questions for Ethan?
You said that there was one person that had a public comment when you guys were discussing this during the Planning Commission?
That's right.
It just seems like it would probably be a sensitive subject, so curious to see how this goes.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing no questions. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. It's right now 7:22. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the council regarding this ordinance, if you please step up to the podium, give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
How fellow 152 West 15th Street? Well, I was looking at that trailers and all this stuff, you know. They're all over the place out there in South Q High. You know, if now what you're telling me, you're gonna, you're gonna live in it for two weeks? I mean, it's not, you know, if you're gonna enforce it, I can see that, but you're not gonna enforce it. You know, so, you know, why why go to all the trouble to put that in code? You know, it's just adding another step that, you know, it's not gonna make any difference to anybody. God bless America.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I would like to know, what's the big deal if you own your property and you have your trailer sitting out front? Is there like an ugly ordinance of some sort? Or what's the problem? You know, I'd like to know that. I appreciate the two weeks, but.
Yeah, so typically, we don't address public comments during the staff meeting or during the council meeting, but staff would, you know, answer their questions and get back to the people. But Ethan, if you could please address that. The other thing about co-enforcement, of course, in the city of the center, the way co-enforcement primarily works is it's it's complaint driven. So if someone does complain about a neighbor or a trailer that's been parked too long, then the city will take action and enforce the code. So to your point, I don't believe the city won't enforce it. I do believe this will give us the wherewithal to do exactly that. To arbitrarily drive through the city and enforce the code is not something that the city anticipates. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, please. But again, we do have to address fractions of the code when we do get a public complaint. That's something that the city cannot ignore. Okay?
I have a question. Is now an okay time or should I wait?
Let's let the public hearing stop and then we'll have time for calls to them.
Sorry.
I'm Skip Garrelson. I live out on Jenny Creek Road. I'm curious, because I guess I was confused on watching this. I thought the two-week period was on-street parking, not off-the-side parking. I thought the limitation would be two weeks on-street, but it wouldn't be in violation off the side of the home. Is that correct? Okay. In that thinking, does this modification of the parking ordinance take into consideration creating the potential for additional land use for storage areas? In other words, it seems to me like, isn't that a prohibited code under having land use? What's the mini storages and and RV storages? Isn't that a?
So I believe in our, none of our current zones have that as a allowed use. So that would be something that we would look at. It would be a separate code amendment or code amendment to this.
I'm just thinking ahead. If if the idea was to keep residential, is there an accommodation for the owner of said vehicle someplace for him to take their stuff? Just a thought.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop. With this proposed change, it's in the, on the parking, the timeframe, et cetera. There are many parts of the city that's divided up into homeowners associations. And in those homeowners association, they have CCNRs that they are mandated to sign and follow. And in that, in there, they have time, things concerning the off-street park, excuse me, on-street parking. And as far as the time limit that they're allowed to have them there, et cetera. And also the fact that they can't restrict licensed or non-licensed vehicles, I can restrict non-licensed vehicles from being parked on the street because they're not legal. But is this something, if it runs in contrary with the homeowners association, that they were going to have to go back and change it? Or are they flexible enough that they can work within it? That's just a thought for the thought process.
Yeah, a good question. So they're two separate things. And so the HOA regulations would apply on top of the city's regulations. And the HOA is responsible for enforcing their regulations and the city is responsible for enforcing its regulations, as the mayor said, if if somebody makes a complaint.
Thank you. That would be a lot of work changing if we didn't work together on it. Thank you. Thank you.
Dennis Hill, 1360 West Alder Place. As an RV owner in the past, the opportunity to have that in the code that says two weeks, normally, for those RVers that are probably some here, maybe, if you're traveling, you're going to go to town, bring it in front of your home for a couple days is usually all it takes. But so rarely would you ever have it there more than three or four days at a time before you head out of town or head back into town. So I just want to say that I think that two weeks for the year is probably more than sufficient in order to get it on the street, get it taken care of, get it off the street, and get it moved to storage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience this evening? Okay. Not seeing anybody stepping up to the podium. We'll move on to people that are calling, that are calling in that would like to make a comment. I see the clerk saying that we don't have anybody calling in. Anybody coming in on the virtual meeting? No. Or any comments to be read? Okay, so at?
I have another question, though. I've been waiting. That's okay.
Well, we'll close the public hearing, then we can have a discussion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, just want to make sure.
Yeah, this is for the public interaction.
All right.
So at 7:30, I will close the public hearing, and I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful comments. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the City Council. And City Council, if you have any questions, comments, conversation amongst yourselves, this is the time to do it.
So in the center, we have, I don't know specifically how many, but we have more than one or more than two, at least that I know of, private roads that are within our city limits. How does this, and right now, I know of the issue on Sixth Street. I've, you know, as far as the fire stuff turnaround issue with that, because it's partly private, partly city-owned. I'm just curious, how does this blanket those roads as well? How does the ordinances and codes that you make, how do they also play into the private roads that are also not necessarily city-maintained, but in the city limits?
Well, so I think maybe your question is relating to the piece of the presentation that talked about allowing on-street parking in downtown to count to meet the off-street parking requirements. And so there has to be parking available on the street. And generally speaking, on-street parking is prohibited on private streets because they're narrower. So if somebody parks there, that's technically a parking violation, and they can't do that, and they can't count that as parking toward the development.
I also just mean with the RV stuff and all of this stuff, how is this, how do you, when you, does that just blanket all the roads within the city limits? And if they're private, they also, those ordinances also just automatically go with those roads as well?
Yeah, so I think that two-week limitation would apply on public and private roads, as well as driveways that come off of private roads or public roads. They're still able to park trailers and recreational vehicles and everything else behind the front facade, just like if you have, or on a public or a private road.
Okay. And do you know why on Third Street, like across from the Palace Casino, that it's a pretty wide road, why there's a no parking sign there on the right? Like, so typically, you're not allowed to park on, near the sidewalk right there. There are cars that do, but there is no parking sign there. And I've just always wondered why, because it's such a wide road, and it's, you know, can be convenient for folks sometimes to park there, or?
Could be a site distance thing, but we can take a look at that and get information for you.
I was just always curious, yeah. But yeah, anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the other council members? Okay. I would just real quick like to acknowledge all the hard work that Ethan has put into this code. It's a, these are very involved processes, and I'd also like to thank the Planning Commission for all their time, efforts, and hardworking in going through this code and making the necessary changes. So just greatly appreciate it. With that being said, could I get a motion?
Yeah. May I move to adopt ordinance 2022-10 amending the parking standards in the La Center Municipal Code?
And then I think you need to also list the full list of sections in the ordinance.
Oh, I thought you said we didn't.
No, we're good. Okay, very good. Thank you. And a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2022-10 amending the parking standards in the La Center Municipal Code. This is an ordinance, so could I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Serben?
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you again, Ethan. Good job. So that concludes our meeting for this evening. And I want to thank everybody for attending this evening, and appreciate all the efforts and hard work of city staff as we continue to work through these many, many, many issues that we're dealing with on a, on a monthly basis. Okay. Could I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Get better, Sean.